So we're gonna start with some recognitions tonight.
We are, and we have from our CTE department, we have Mr. Dave Tomaso here, and we have Senior Amin Parks who has a very interesting scholarship award that he's won, Time for Payback. So we'll give you a little background here and then we're gonna just celebrate you, okay? Just take it all in, alright? The Next Gen Personal Finance ran a scholarship contest in the fall. Two winners from each state were awarded a scholarship for $500. Students were tasked with playing the NGPF's online game, Time for Payback, a game that simulates making choices during college and learning about student loan debt. Students were asked to respond to one of the writing prompts, and the personal finance students in Mr. Tomaso's class at Daniel Hand participated. And one of the winners, one of the two from the state of Connecticut, is Amin Parks, senior at Daniel Hand. His response stood out among all the entrants from Connecticut, and as a result, he was awarded a $500 scholarship and all the adulation at the Madison Board of Education. Congratulations!
Amin, can you tell us the theme of your...
Sure, yeah. So, pretty much what it was, was we had like a simulation kind of game, and it had us go through college. And it was, you know, you had different choices. You could go public, you could go private, big, small school. But you know, with that, you had to pay tuition, right? You had to balance school life and stuff. But at the end of the day, you get your major, but you also get a big old student loans, right? If you go to a big, private college or something like that. So I knew student loans was like a problem before this, but I didn't think, before I took this class and before I did that simulation type game, I didn't think it'd be that much of a problem. But I'm just strolling through, next thing I know, I have to pay like 100K. Like, what's going on here, right? Something I'm like, may as well try to go for the scholarship, right? And help out a little bit. So, Mr. Tomaso, he proposed it, and I was like, why not? It's not too bad, so I tried, and worked out, I'm here.
That's really exciting.
Yeah, so I talked about how, you know, you have to be responsible, you can't be going crazy with the student loans, because you know, you do have to pay them back. At the moment, it's like, you know, you think like, you got the money, you're good, but you do have to pay it back eventually, and it can hurt you later on, so be careful.
That's great advice. What are you putting your $500 towards?
Oh, definitely school. Yeah.
People learn a lot.
Yeah.
If you do not advance your career in personal finance, I think something in public speaking would be very important.
Thank you, thank you, I try my best.
For if I have to lecture my four children, I'd much appreciate it. That's great, congratulations. Watch this house.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Of course, I would never...
I told mom and dad that we have a riveting agenda, but at any point, if they want to excuse themselves, feel free to. But thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Congratulations to you too, mom and dad, it's a big honor.
And moving on, National School Counseling Week, February 3rd to the 7th, and the theme this year was helping build better humans. It's the focusing public attention on the unique contributions of school counselors across the nation. I think we all know that we expanded the program this year down to the elementary level by adding an elementary counselor. Every month, I have my monthly meetings with the individual principals. Again, great feedback about the program down there, and about the performance of the school counselor at the elementary level. Rachel Lynch and the teachers are integrating the program very well. And this is before we even get into the depth of the curriculum writing that we have covered with the Wellness Program. So, we have five, three, eight, nine, 10, we have upwards of 10 to 12 school counselors in the district across the system. So, in honor of School Counseling Week, I want to recognize them. We invited them to come for a variety of reasons. They are not here tonight, but they were very grateful for the invitation and for the recognition.
They are very grateful for all they do. Okay, public participation, is there any member of the public who would like to speak? The student representatives report, Jackie and Erica are here.
Eric, you have two tests tomorrow, you said?
Yeah.
Jackie, you have any tests tomorrow?
Yeah.
You do too?
I do.
You do? You're sticking it out, though?
I'm gonna stick it out.
Alright, what's new?
Okay, so...
She's a senior.
So, it's Friday, Valentine's Day, so the Children's Charity Club is selling Valentines to students for like a dollar or $2, I think, if you want a message on it or something, just to raise money to go back. And it'll have like little candy hearts and stuff, so that's a fun thing, a little festive. And this past Friday, our SEC team, which is Amin, is a big driving force of just won a whole bunch of SEC awards. One of my friends on the team told me they won everything. I don't know if that's new, but probably pretty close to it.
Indoor track.
Indoor track, right. They won by, I think, was it 80 points or something? Like, most of the meetings were a couple of points.
I just saw all the pictures, everyone like covered in yellow.
Yeah, no, they really did win.
Cleaned up.
First time ever for us to win indoor track SEC.
Yeah. It's exciting.
Very impressive, yeah.
So, also, I think, I've lost track of time, maybe a week ago or two weeks ago, course selections were turned in and also during that, the senior photos were taken. And I believe everyone had a fun time going through the new books of all the new courses. I especially did. This past week, we took a survey in PA for social and emotional learning, which I'm assuming was distributed by you guys. And I thought it was very quick and easy. It was not, usually those surveys are going down a list. And it just took me 10 seconds to go through it, and it was a good survey.
Was this one online too?
Yeah.
It was?
Yeah, it was on the Google form.
Google survey.
Yeah. And going back to the sports, the boys hockey team, we beat Guilford 3 to 1 this past week. And tomorrow, we're going away to Guilford, and we're gonna see if we can get the first win streak against them since it passed eight years, the first time.
Well, you skipped right over, I'll say it for you. They beat Lyman Hall, first time in a long time in hockey. Eric's a goaltender, and pitched a shutout.
Yeah. Nice work, Eric.
That was another benchmark for the team.
And to embarrass you further, I shared the video with everyone around the table. That was CT Game Time did our Game Time CT. They did a remarkable job covering, you know, the way you've approached life in general and sports with your dad, your coach, your teammates. So, I just want to say, I couldn't have been more proud. I told your mom that, I sat next to her at one of the games. I couldn't have been more proud to see that, so congratulations.
Really special.
Thank you.
Nice to have you on our team. Absolutely.
Thank you guys for choosing me to come.
You're welcome. Now, we're gonna kick you out, so you can go study for your test.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Eric. Anything else, Jackie?
Jackie, you're doing the on-the-hook now, though, because Jackie and I met...
She's reconsidering.
No, you're like, Eric, keep on studying, Eric, you're good.
Bye.
Jackie's doing the on-the-hook. So, a couple things, we are gonna do a presentation right now. We met about a year ago about social emotional learning, if you remember, in the conference room in Hand. When Jackie joined the board, she made it clear that she, you know, wanted to be active. And it is a challenge to get the student rep to be active. We all get deep, you all get deep in your work. And this is an incredible opportunity, because I know it's a passion of yours. Mrs. Barden from Youth and Family Services, they call you Mrs. Barden? Kathryn, what do they call you?
It changes.
It changes, okay, I'll call you Mrs. Barden tonight, okay? Youth and Family Services is gonna do a presentation with me on the Search Institute survey, all the students took in the fall, which you were part of, all the attitudes and behaviors around healthy living, substance abuse, and so forth. So, it would be really helpful if you provided your take as well, okay? If we go through this, because you're a student at the high school...
They're living it.
We see data, but you could tell a story, which is more important than the data itself, to tell a story about that, so. And the survey, just to make one plug to, the survey that was taken at the high school around social emotional learning is leading up to our tri-state visit in May on social emotional learning. So that's why the students at all the schools are doing that, correct, Ellen?
Yes, in most.
In most. Alright. Without further ado, Kathryn, come up.
I wanted to hide when he said like, usually those surveys are really long. I'm like, who would do that?
I can't imagine.
Your eyes bleed. Do you want to hand those out?
Yeah.
These went out electronically, I believe. This is the PowerPoint slides and then the data.
Just so you guys have more numbers and paper on top of more...
I'll come over there with you.
It's like, we're all on the same playing field, and we all have stacks of paper. So, my name is Kathryn Barden, I work for Madison Youth and Family Services. I am the Assistant Director of Community Support, which is a whole new role for me. Previously, I was just focused on making Madison the drug and alcohol coalition, but our state grant ended, or our federal grant ended. And so they kind of folded me into a new position, which I guess is still new data, which is really a plus. So, Made in Madison, the schools, and Madison Youth and Family Services has been partnering since 2006, was officially the first year that we did a school survey. And we've been doing the Search Institute survey every two years since 2009, with one little blip in 2017. And that's because we've been using the Search Institute survey, but in 2017, they went only online. And we felt that we weren't ready for all of our students to do a survey online at the same time. You can imagine the stress of, can the IT department handle this? Can the kids handle this? What's gonna happen? So, we actually created our own paper survey two years ago, and had our evaluator work with us to have similar questions to the Search Institute survey, so that we wouldn't lose years' worth of data. But at the same time, we kind of lost tracking 4D developmental assets. And the 4D developmental assets are a series of 40 different internal and external factors. If they say, if kids possess these 40 different assets, if they feel good about themselves and the community that they're growing up in, that they're way less likely to get into drugs, alcohol, or risky behaviors. On the flip side, they're gonna be more well-rounded, more resilient, and be able to handle adversity in a better way. I'll get into some slides that really show that in a few minutes. So, I really appreciate the schools partnering with us. There are some school districts in Connecticut that literally can't go after federal grants or state grants, because they can't get the school system to agree to do school surveys. And we've always approached it as, we're doing it in the schools, but this is a community issue. We're not gonna put the blame on the schools, we're not gonna put the blame on the parents, we're all in this together. So, we're never gonna come back with survey results and say, okay, here, fix it. Because that's impossible, we need to all work together. So, I'm just gonna go through some of the highlights, so I'll use some time for question and answer. It's really just highlights, because you can imagine going through a survey of 160 questions, with an addendum on top of it, we could be here all night, for sure, going through every single thing. So, we'll just kind of hit, you know, what we really saw as we reviewed the data. And it's interesting, because in the past, our federal grant ended right before the school survey. So, we were able to still use some federal grant money to pay for the survey. However, we couldn't pay for the evaluator, so you're looking at... But it's interesting, because when we do the school survey online, or on paper, however we do it, there's always the question of how accurate is this gonna be? Are our kids gonna tell the truth? And for the most part, they did. So, the Search Institute has certain criteria that they follow, and they can actually throw out surveys based on how they're answered. They look for answering in certain patterns, they look for a whole bunch of different things, you know. Sometimes with like addendums and stuff like that, we've actually put in fake drugs, so that we knew if a student answered that they used that drug, we're like, mm, they're lying, they're gone, out, and we throw it out. So typically, there's a margin of error where a certain number of surveys that are completed are thrown out, because they're either completed too quickly, they're missing too many answers, or they're definitely answering in patterns. So, one thing, when we used to do it on paper, we had about 3% of our surveys thrown out. And the national average was 5 to 8%. So, our kids were a little bit more honest than the national average. Now that we've transitioned to online, we made 9% of our surveys through our office here, which you'd think, wow, that's higher than when we did it on paper. However, the national average for doing it online is 12 to 15%. So, it's still right in line with our kids are answering more honestly than the national average is, which is really cool. So, the good news is, when we went through the data, it wasn't a super remarkable year in terms of like, oh no, this is a really big problem. Two years ago, when we went through the survey data, we noticed that our juniors were out using our seniors in every single substance, which is something that we had not seen before. The good news is, that's not the case this time. But we're also seeing that substance use across the board is down, and our 4D developmental assets are up. And that really follows exactly what we know about the research with the 4D developmental assets. Even though we've seen a decrease in substance use, we know that there's still work to be done. Alcohol is still by far our number one substance of choice for our young people. Vaping is still there. We've seen a decrease, but it's still there. And unfortunately, we're also seeing that kids are using vape devices for THC. And we knew that that was gonna be a problem, so we've worked really closely with the school system to try and address it before it became a bigger problem. 53% of our youth are now reporting that they have 21 to 40 assets, which is exactly where we wanted. We wanted to see our kids fall in that 21 to 40 range. You'll see a closer breakdown in a minute. And the number of students who reported having 0 to 10 assets decreased from 9%. And it was tied over 2013 and 2015, but that's now dropped to 6%, which is exactly the category that we want to work on and decrease those students who say that they have 0 to 10 assets. So, for 30-day use, some of these numbers, we could actually go back to 2006, because that's when we did the ADAS survey. But we see alcohol use has come down from 43% to 33%. Marijuana use, it says 17% back in 2006, but the interesting thing is that trended upwards every single year that we were doing the survey. So, we actually had our highest spike at 17% two years ago. And it's interesting, because we worked with a group of students to do a survey rollout, which we're gonna do a community survey rollout next Thursday, the 20th. At the Senior Center at 6:30 PM, if anybody wants to come. But it's, we've been working with students to try and put a story to these numbers. Because these numbers are great, because they don't really tell us a story. They don't tell us what it's like to be a high school student right now. So, we want to hear from them, what these numbers mean to them and why they are what they are.
A couple of things, we, most board members may not have been on then, but we had a presentation in June of 2017, where we had five of our students, who I met with every Thursday for eight straight weeks, looking at the data and breathing life into, what does this mean as a life of a teenager at Daniel Hand High School in Madison? And, you know, they were very raw with, you know, the role of the adults in normalizing some of their behaviors, some of their concerns were around that. They talked about, you know, the lack of social alternatives and so forth, and then maybe the boredom, but they were incredibly concerned with the role models and the, well, if you leave your keys in the house, it's okay, everyone can stay here and do what you want, you can be here, I'll watch. Too many of those stories, they felt normalized, and Kathryn and I have talked, well, Youth and Family about the normalization of marijuana, and the, you know, the concept that there are kids who are confused, is it legal or not, because of the medicinal and our bordering states. So, that's a hard number, I think, for us to confront.
Yeah.
And a hard phenomenon to confront. The vaping one really jumps out with the drop there. I asked Mr. Bodnar from the high school, Brian Bodnar, Assistant Principal, to come as well. He can help answer any operational questions you might have. But a lot of interventions are put into place at the high school, and I would like to think that has something to do with that drop.
Absolutely, and it was interesting, because when we surveyed the kids a few years ago, we were surveying really at the height of vaping of the decade. Like, this was the new rush, everybody was doing it, it was all drooling at that point, aside from all the other devices that have come and gone. There were really no regulations around banning flavors or anything else. And when we surveyed in October of 2019, that was really at the height of all this public information coming out, that people were going to the hospital, suffering from lung-related injuries, so. I think, you know, that was all the school policies put in place, and just everything really came together, which is great. And it was interesting, so when we first got the results back, as much as we were excited to see that decrease, we were like, hmm. Is there like a blip in this, where they weren't answering honestly? But even in talking to our students, they're like, no, less kids are definitely vaping than they were a couple of years ago, which is good, because we, again, we graduated those juniors and seniors from two years ago, and we have a whole new class of freshmen and sophomores. And prescription drugs is at the lowest it has been so far, which is great.
Can I ask a question, or do you want to save questions till the end? Does it matter?
Sure.
I'm just curious, for the 30-day use, is that any use at all? Or do you break it down into occasional 10 or more days? Do you...
So, we do break it down further, but for this, we just did in general.
This is any use at all, even just once? Thank you.
So, but it's also important, because if you ask, if I walked into Daniel Hand High School and just asked a random student, do you think everyone's using? They're gonna be like, yeah, everyone's using. And it's interesting, it's almost like, did anybody here not watch Game of Thrones?
I didn't.
Did you feel like the only person that didn't watch Game of Thrones?
Yeah, I was ashamed to even admit it.
I almost didn't raise my hands, I was ashamed.
But Gail and I haven't watched it.
But you were not like the only one that followed the social norms and that everybody was doing it. It's kind of the same thing, the stories that catch your attention are the ones that carry, not like the, oh, I had a great weekend with my family, we played four games. Because those aren't the stories that are gonna carry throughout the holidays. So, we were really excited, but we're also even more excited to talk to students and have them back up this information. So, for depression and anxiety, the Search Institute asks about, you know, how many times the last ones have you felt sad? And we felt like that wasn't the best indicator for depression and anxiety. So, two years ago, we worked with our evaluator to put in the PHQ4 scale, which is a screening tool that physicians use for asking about moderate to severe forms of anxiety and depression. The interesting thing is, if you question the validity of the survey, moving from paper to online, the fact that the moderate to severe, or the moderate form of anxiety between 2017 to 2019 was 13.7 on the dot, both years, it was like, okay. They're still answering pretty honestly.
Yeah.
But it was interesting, because we shaved off a few numbers from the none to mild, and unfortunately, they all went to severe. So, we're now at 25% of our high school students fall into the moderate to severe form of anxiety and depression.
For, just around the administrative team talking, that's probably one of the most alarming pieces of data, is that you go to a classroom of 20, and you've got a whole handful of kids in there that are at that level. And it's self-reporting, but I think you backed up that the data is pretty accurate in the self-reporting way.
And the Search Institute survey does ask about how many times, or if you have attempted suicide, if you have, how many times. And every year, we saw that number take up by one percentage point. In 2017, we saw that come down from 11% to 9%, we stayed the same for this year. So, we're glad to see it not take up, but again, we would like to see that number come down. And it does correlate to what we're seeing in surrounding communities as well. Sometimes they're a little bit higher than they are.
And there are certain subgroups that have high rates as well.
Yeah, especially for anybody who identifies as gay, lesbian, bisexual, or questioning. I always want to throw the T in there, even though in my survey head, the T ends up going into gender and not sexual orientation. So, I always have to like remove the T from the acronym and actually say what it stands for. But yeah, anybody who identifies as, for the sexual orientation being a minority, has much higher rates of anxiety and depression, which unfortunately, we weren't surprised about. So, this is one of my favorite slides that really talks about...
Hi, Joe. I love it.
Why assets are so important, and this isn't just the natural data, this is Madison's data from this survey. So, it just shows you that for the kids who fall into the 31 to 40 range for the number of assets they report to having, they're so much less likely to use alcohol and other drugs.
And that's almost the same as the last survey, the same slope, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Obviously, we still have work to do on the alcohol, because it's still at 15%. But when you look at tobacco, marijuana, prescription drugs, they disappear for those 31 to 40. So, I think it really just speaks to why we need to work together as a community to continue to raise assets in our young people, so they feel supported and they make these healthy decisions, because this is what's gonna help them when they go off to college.
Two things about the assets that the board should be aware of. Number one, is the foundation of the Wellness Program curriculum that Gail's working with the team. They're using the assets as the foundation. And number two, from the community perspective, our whole child wellness team, which we formed about five, six years ago, Youth and Family joined us in doing a crosswalk and looking at the 4D assets as to who owns what. And you'd be surprised, I mean, about half the school feels, okay, we definitely own. And there's moms and dads, there's, you know, volunteer coaches, there's clergy that really own fostering the assets in kids. It truly is a holistic look at how to raise a healthy kid, with all these different support systems.
We actually had to talk to schools, Adam tried to own too many of them, so we're like, let's put that on the community and parents, and I love that. Which was great, but we also went through how many programs and how many things that we do in the school system that actually impact these 4D developmental assets. It was a long list, and something we're really proud of. So, strengths and challenges. So, our asset strengths, youth programs, school engagement, family support, achievement, motivation, and integrity. And the next slide will actually go through what those mean and how they are. For our challenges, restraint, which we hate to see on that list in terms of, not that you could rank assets, because the idea is to have as many as 40 as possible, but restraint is a good one to have on the good side. Parent involvement in schooling, creative activities, community values, youth, and reading for pleasure.
So, I'm just curious, the school engagement is on the kids' engagement in school, and then the parent involvement in schooling is the lack of engagement by parents?
Yeah.
Definition's up there.
Oh, thank you.
So, for our strengths, 84% of our kids are involved in three or more hours a week of sports clubs or organizations at school or in the community.
That's...
That's huge.
That may be underestimating that. It may be younger.
But that's amazing.
It is, it's great.
For school engagement, 84% of our kids are actively engaged in learning.
Self-reporting.
You like to see that be 100, but I mean, 84 teenagers saying that they're actively engaged in learning, that's pretty good. Family support, so they feel like they have a family life that provides high-level, loving support. Again, a really good one to have on our side. Achievement motivation, for the town of Madison, that is not a surprise.
No.
Everybody's saying you would think that would be our top one.
It may also be the driver of the anxiety numbers.
And integrity, which is another great one to have on our side, at 76%. So, where we get into the challenges, again, restraint. A young person believes that it's important to not be sexually active or to use alcohol or other drugs, 29%. We would like to see that number come up. And I think we have some work to do there. Parent involvement in schooling, 23%. So, this is where parents are actively involved in helping a young person succeed in school. The challenging thing with this, though, is we're talking about high school students. So, I think there's a certain drive to have your kids solve their own problems and go to the teacher themselves. So, I think, you know, naturally, as students get older, parents pull back a little bit more in terms of how involved they are with schooling.
How does that compare to other communities?
Our challenge assets are almost spot-on for all the other communities, which is no surprise, yeah. Creative activities, it's interesting, because youth programs is one of our top assets. But when it comes to creative activities, spending three or more hours a week in lessons or practice for music theater or other arts, it's only 23%. And we actually had a great conversation about this today, saying that the students felt like we could do a better job of showing support to plays, musicals, and like vibe and other activities, not just focusing on football games and other things, so. It was interesting to hear that they felt like, you know, we needed to diversify a little bit in terms of, as a community, where we're spending a lot of our energy supporting. Community values, youth, again, this is very similar to every other community. It's hard for a young person to feel like the adults in the community really value their opinion and what they do. But again, this speaks to, as a community, we need to look at ways that we can change that and make young people feel valued, like they're heard. And reading for pleasure, at this point, our kids are like, next time we take a survey, it's not even gonna be out there, because it's just declined every single year. But also, the idea of what they're reading. You know, we've talked about like being able to read on your phone, and does that count? They don't necessarily think about it as reading for pleasure. Obviously, we need to change that. There's gonna be a new library soon, so we could do something like boost attendance at the library and boost one of our assets. But it's something that we want to continue to work on, and not just have kids feel like they go to school, they're exhausted, and they don't want to pick up a book.
Kathryn, can I just ask a question about your restraint challenge? Was that separated out as two different questions?
So, all the assets are actually compiled from a series of different questions, so...
Because I'm just curious if they were more or less like, if those ones were different when you separate out sexually active and alcohol and other drugs?
They're pretty similar.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sexually active is a little bit lower than drugs and alcohol, but they're not too far off from each other.
Okay, thank you.
So, asset transfer, okay. Okay, so one of the things that we noticed was between 2015 and 2019, because again, we had that skip in 2017 when we didn't do the full survey. But we saw safety go from 76% to 66%. Now, it's important when we talk about safety to know that we're not just talking about how safe a student feels in the school, but we're talking about how safe they feel in their school, their home, and their neighborhood. And it's interesting, because again, in talking to our students, they're like, what neighborhoods? We don't have neighborhoods, we have friends, and we spend, we get in our car, we drive to our friend's house, or we ride our bike to our friend's house. We don't get to know our neighbors, but, you know, you guys did. Because they think that we're all old and we like, you know, concrete neighborhoods. So it's interesting to see that number change, but I think that's also a product of the world that we're living in.
I'd be curious what the national numbers would be on that for the average adult who are on safety, if it's trending downward from 2015 to 2019?
Yeah, because I think there's been a lot of behavior change from adults to kids in terms of how we handle things.
I think that's also a reflection of the population and the less students. Because my kids grew up in a neighborhood, and I think he as well, Gail and Aaron, neighborhood like 100 kids. So I think it's the trend in the neighborhood and the students or children that are along the way.
Although my neighborhood's flipped over, there's more kids in there.
When mine were growing up, yeah, so it probably depends on where you live, but I think also what kids consider a neighborhood is different than what we do, for sure.
I wonder if the decrease in the feeling of safeness might have anything to do with how much social media is spreading information, where you are seeing and hearing about more shootings and violence worldwide and in our country, as opposed to just what you would normally hear locally?
Yeah, true. It is interesting, because when I talk to the students, you know, I grew up and I was in high school during Columbine. And so it happened, and we panicked, and we had, you know, the copycat threats that happened from school to school, and then within a week, we forgot about it. It wasn't, we weren't doing drills, it wasn't a constant thing in the back of our heads, and we didn't have social media that kept reminding us of what happened. The news didn't cover it as frequently as they do some of the other things. So it was, we were able to separate ourselves out a lot easier from it, and reflect in the moment and then move forward, and I think it's a lot harder to do that. Even for, as an adult, you know, every time there's an incident at a movie theater, and then I take my daughter to a movie, I sit in the back row so that I can see what's happening in front of me. Don't have to worry about what's happening behind me, because it's the wall. And so it's just these things that kind of creep into our heads that we don't even always think about, that we're thinking about. Religious community, that's decreased from 50% to 34%, but we're also seeing less and less people actively involved in churches and stuff like that. So it wasn't a huge surprise, but it was one of our bigger decreases. So there's work to do as a community in terms of engaging our religious sectors too. And self-esteem is a big one. So while we've seen a decrease from 57% to 45%, it's not the biggest decrease we've seen. We continue to see a big discrepancy between males and females. And so 52% of our males reported that they had high self-esteem, but only 38% of our females reported that they had high self-esteem.
Catherine, to go to a point that Diane raised, do you think the use of social media tends to have more of a negative effect on young women
Absolutely.
than it does on males? Because I know in a book that Tom had recommended, in a book that Tom had recommended that we read, that I actually read.
For pleasure.
No, that wasn't pleasure.
Yeah, that wasn't.
But it was informative, why it talked about, and I don't remember the word, the author used to describe the phenomenon, but about the fact that young women will go online and they'll see that a party is taking place to which they have not been invited, and that's damaging. And I know my wife, one of the issues that she faces in Girl Scouts is addressing this issue of body image. And I think that's more relevant to young women oftentimes than it is to guys.
Absolutely, it's absolutely a factor.
Jackie? I think like, especially now in today's world, being an influencer is a profession, and people make money and a whole living off of doing that. And so you'll see people who are in these like sponsored rooms wearing all their clothes that they were sent to them for free to do all these things, and people like feel a pressure to like be that way, to fit in more, and that will take up your whole feet. Like every screen you go on, on every platform, will be people and people who look like that. So I think that contributes. And what you're saying about parties and stuff, I remember was brought up when you came with that group of girls before, but especially with Snapchats, like instant pictures back and forth, and you can see all your friends are together and you're not there. And I think that that's, whereas otherwise, you might not have heard about it or cared as much. I think that's something that people are more self-limiting now, because they've realized it like takes over your life, but it's definitely like become a way bigger problem and something that everyone, or I would say like most girls, I don't think guys generally care as much, but most girls, if you'd asked them, had an experience like that.
Do you, now that it's, those situations are more prevalent, do you guys address it with each other? Like, do you have guidance on how to address those feelings or?
I mean, like, for me and like most of my friends, it's something you like, were sad about, and you talked to your mom about, and then kind of like got over. Or sometimes like, you know, friend group problems, and people fight and drama and move around. But some of that, I also think is kind of just high school and going through high school and all the drama that no one needs, and like people excluding other people and whatever else.
Good, thank you.
Jackie, does the influencer issue that you brought up, does that relate to body image? You mean, are influencers trying to?
Yeah, I mean, to be an influencer, you have, like, they all look a certain way, and that's how you're going to get people to sponsor you, because more people are going to follow them and like their pictures and all those like stereotypical things that people, like, my friends always say like, I know I shouldn't care about how many likes my picture got, but it only got 100, and they usually get 250, and so I'm going to take it off. And they know that they shouldn't care, but it's like subconsciously affecting you. It's like, why are people liking my picture? How come these people aren't following me back?
Physiologically, it's affecting you too.
It's a dopamine hit. It's a dopamine hit. It's a dopamine hit. The other thing, it was Emma who brought that up. So Kirk, one of the young ladies, who's a senior that you're Emma Valdez, said, you know, Mrs. Grace, when you were in high school and you were not invited to a party, you may have found out at the lunch table the following week, or kids were talking about it, you wondered what happened, maybe you were embarrassed to ask, you did ask. I sit home in my bedroom and I could watch it live on my phone. That is a stark contrast, and you know, which leads to a lot of other unhealthy, I think, you know, self-image problems as well. We were always excluded, people were always being excluded historically, and they still are. And I know adults who have their feelings hurt when they're excluded, but for a teen to go through that and to be alone possibly in their room, it is, it is a stark contrast of the generations. It's kind of defining the generation.
It's not like it happens in that moment, it's like it happens, and then all the pictures and the videos and everything else from that night is everywhere. And so it's just like that constant reminder.
Makes it hard to get over it.
Yeah.
Because you're constantly being reminded of it.
Yeah, or just like excuse it when you see your friends next time, like, oh, they probably just didn't know that I would have wanted to go, or something like that. That is just like always there, and it's like hard to get rid of.
So do any of your friends or people that you know, do they decide like, I just don't want to do social media anymore? Or is it just everyone does it and everyone's going to do it?
I mean, people would just say like, oh, I'm detoxing this week. But like, they'll try not to go on it for like a day or like three days maybe, but, I mean, yeah. It's a great time waster too, to just go through things. And like, no one's going to go pick up a book, you saw the numbers.
And we place the club.
Everyone goes right back to, sorry.
Ways we can pick them.
I would agree, just by talking to other kids and professionals, I think it is as close to 100% as it gets. I will say though, that I do think there's a gender difference as well when it comes to the use of technology. I think you get a difference in the social media use among females by and large, at least it's been reported. And then more of a gaming mentality, or less of a social connection mentality with boys. But it's, it's as close to 100% of being like ours you can get.
So maybe what we really need is more parental involvement or two.
It's a novel concept.
Yeah, I mean, there's social implications to that as well, which is challenging.
I remember that in middle school, when everyone's parents were trying to keep them away from it as much as possible, but then you're excluded from the social media that everyone else can see, and that creates a whole nother kind of separation. So it's definitely a tough issue.
It is, I do presentations where I talk about social media and parental controls and cell phone contracts, and it hit our household hard, where it's like, whoa, bring it in, turn off the wifi at a certain time, no phone in the bedroom. And it's hard to control, like, once you open that door, it's amazing how quickly it explodes. So, it's hard. So the other trends, good trends of?
These are great, yeah.
These are great. So school boundaries, the school provides clear rules and consequences, increased from 49% to 64%.
Wow, that's great.
That's awesome.
I think it might have a lot to do with, Mr. Bodden was here, the students, student reps, and the students spoke very loudly that they felt that the baby in high school was so prevalent. And I remember, who was it?
Tom Pelvin.
Who was the young boy, who was the senior? Oh my god, I forget.
Aiden?
Was it Aiden?
Yeah.
Was it Aiden? Okay. Who had mentioned that, you know, it was just kind of, isn't that Aiden? No, it wasn't Aiden.
No.
No, it was the one after Aiden. But regardless, it was, I know it's not to avoid. Until we, you know, I put together the plan at the high school, which became very proactive, and I think there's a comfort level at least that it's come down. It hasn't been eliminated probably, but it's come down a lot.
I was surprised the decrease wasn't actually greater.
Really?
Because especially with all the articles coming out last spring and over the summer about lungs collapsing and all this other stuff, I feel like most people have it. Also, something I thought was interesting about this data is I remember when we took the survey, it was a big thing, everyone was like laughing about, oh, of course, they did it right after Halloween and homecoming. So I think that also might have been. So I think everyone was thinking it might be.
Was that for Christmas, timing?
Uh, no, so it was funny, because I was like, yeah, the timing, I'm like, ooh, ooh. Like, because we set the date, and then I saw the homecoming date, and I was like.
Yeah, we always do it in the fall, yeah.
But we always do it in the fall.
Yeah.
So it's something that's been consistent, and, you know, when you ask about 30 date use, it's traditionally been at the same time, so it's going to be similar. I'd be more concerned if we moved it from the fall to the spring.
Yeah.
What would happen in terms of how different the numbers would look? Because I think a lot happens during the school year. Just in terms of, you know, you're getting closer to summertime, and especially if you're a senior, like there were more parties and stuff like that. It's a thing. School year went from 68 to 84%. That's huge.
That's.
A huge jump. Equality and social justice went from 51 to 62%. And cultural competence went from 38 to 50%. There's been a lot in the schools.
A ton.
With the diversity clubs, everything else.
The English, I was in freshman English class for the last couple hours of the day today, and just the focus in the curriculum, starting there, all the way through the years, and then culminating with elective around race, cultural literature. But the thread that goes through that whole program is really about, you know.
Lots of content.
Yeah.
And this generation is so much more focused on leaving the world a better place than we've ever seen in terms of generations. Which is interesting, because as generations come up, everybody like, you know, talks bad about them, being on the older end of millennials, like, get it, I've heard it, trust me. Trust me. But everybody's like, oh, millennials, oh, Gen Xers, and then we got to the iGen, and everyone's like, this is a generation that's going to save the world.
They are, I love them.
So it's amazing to see that, that we're not just like, oh, they're ruining everything.
I just want to go back to school boundaries again too, because I think you think of adolescents, especially in high school, as wanting, you know, more freedom and not wanting people breathing down their neck. And I think the school responding, the district responding to kids saying they were uncomfortable using the bathroom at school because of all the vaping, and they didn't know who to talk to or how to. I think being responsive to that, I think that that is remarkable. And I also think it shows that kids feel safer when there's boundaries and clear rules that they can follow, so. And it was rolled out in a way that was communicated well, so it wasn't a lot of backlash, it wasn't punitive.
It wasn't a gotcha.
Yeah, it didn't look punitive, it looked like, look, we hear what you're saying, and we're going to try and adjust this, which is, I think, in that age group can be a tough line to navigate, so.
It is much as.
Ryan.
Thank you. Ryan, that sort of one.
And as much as kids say they don't play, they want to push against boundaries, but I like to think of it as when you go to a roller coaster, and you sit down, and like the bar comes down, and the first thing you do is you push against it, and it's not because you want it to fail, because trust me, you don't want it to fail, you want to make sure it's going to be there when you need it.
That's a great analogy.
And so that's what it's like to be a kid, is you're going to push that, but you really want it to catch you.
That's a great analogy.
The school engagement rise is great as well, and I think that speaks a lot to the tension that the district and central office makes towards, I mean, even when Eric was saying like, we got our, we got the books and we couldn't wait to, you know, to see our course offerings, you know, like, you don't hear that from high school kids who are looking forward to choosing their classes, but because we give them so many options, and really, those decisions are thoughtfully made around what we know, where kids have come from, elementary and middle, and where they're going in college and beyond, or career. Those thoughtful decisions, really, I think that speaks to that. It's cool. Good leadership.
So the other areas of concern, the positive identity, which is made up of the assets of personal power, self-esteem, sense of purpose, and positive view of personal future, was the only asset category, so when you divide it into the 40 developmental assets, you have 20 internal, 20 external, but then there are eight categories altogether, which are the good things. That positive identity one was the only one where everything's come down over time. So it's something that we want to keep an eye on and try to attract. Especially again, when we talk about the sense of self-esteem and other things. It's definitely something, especially with young women, that we want to try to figure out how we can influence that. Maybe we need to join TikTok, I don't know.
Oh, gosh.
So to what extent, what extent does the view of the personal future bring down the score in this first area of concern?
Sure, so the positive view of personal future is actually one of the higher ones. But the interesting thing is that one has, even though it's a higher one, has come down over time. So I know in the data packets that you guys have, there is a sheet that shows the assets over time, and every year that we've had the survey data. That last category is that positive identity one. So positive view of personal future has gone from 76% to 71%, so it's still high.
Yeah.
But it was, again, that only category where everything came down over time. So it's something that, you know, definitely grabbed our attention. Everything else kind of ebbed and flowed, you know, you have the reading for pleasure, which comes down, but other assets in that category came up, or they went up and down a little bit over time. That was the only one that just consistently went down. The percentage of students who reported that they think that there's moderate to great risk of regular marijuana use continues to decline. So again, we kind of talked a little bit about socially what's happening around it, everything in terms of what they watch, what they listen to, you know, what they wear sometimes. It's all, you know, they're getting messages that it's not that big of a deal, especially as more and more states are racing socialize. So we actually, we met with students today that were going to, they're going to be a part of the survey rollout next week. We had a lengthy conversation about marijuana use, which I was expecting that they'd be like, eh, it's not that big of a deal. But we actually asked a question point blank, how would you feel if we had a marijuana shop in town? This was the pass, because this was a health and there's big initiatives this year. And they said, we don't want that in our town. And when we asked why, they're like, can you picture a little kid riding their bike downtown and riding by a marijuana shop and having to explain that why it's okay now when it wasn't before? Like, we didn't live during prohibition and then to see that revealed, so we didn't have to explain that. They actually got into a conversation like, like, it's okay to see your mom have like a glass of wine after dinner, but I can't picture my mom like rolling a joint after dinner. So it was like, it was a really interesting conversation, because well, on the state side, we're hearing it's not as harmful as, you know, drinking beer, you know, there's no big deal about marijuana use. Our kids, as much as we think they see it that way, they're not there yet. So they still do perceive it as something different than alcohol.
Yeah.
But it's interesting to see, especially as we go into this legislative session, with what's going to happen. And, you know, with, one of the. And, you know, with, one of the proposals that came up, because marijuana legalization was like the first thing to pop up in, in the session this year, uh, there are certain regulations saying that a town can pass an ordinance to ban marijuana shops, but it has to go into place before somebody petitions to put a marijuana shop in the town. So it's something that, you know, moving forward, if it looks like this is going to happen, maybe we need to look at the town, as a town, and say, is it something that we want here and not want here, based on how it would impact our young people.
That's, that's.
Because when we talk about marijuana legalization, in terms of medicines and family services, we only think about it from the perspective of how is this going to impact our young people? And they talked today about what it's going to be for access, so like, anybody can get it and it'd be legalized, just like alcohol, you know, we think about how easy it is to access alcohol, and that's one of the big arguments that you hear with the capitalists, like, oh, alcohol is legal and it's going to be much different, it's like, well, we're not doing a great job in terms of underage drinking numbers, historically that's been the case, uh, so it's interesting to see how that impacts, uh, but, you know, youth notes over twenty-one, we still know it's very much going to be a youth issue.
Yeah.
Uh, and again, the access to vaping devices has not helped the marijuana issue either, uh, because they're now have the ability to vape T H C. So what's going well, where, where do we need to go? We need to continue this partnership that we have, I think we have something very special as a community where we work really, really well together, we need to continue to work really, really well together, and we need to.
Now, on that note, when, when I started here and Scott wasn't quite in yet, it was a bit of a fledgling partnership, we had some grant obligations, we really didn't get involved until probably maybe four years ago or so on the strategic approach, when, you know, literally Scott and I would meet over the summer, and we still do, what does your strategic plan look like, here's what ours looks like. Now, we have district-wide committees that Catherine sits on, she's a part of, Scott sits on our, our school-based committees, we've always had counselors in our schools for youth and family to provide support, but to approach it from a strategic perspective, um, I, I think that's been probably one of the greatest parts of the partnership, is that we've been able to cross, collab with each other in a powerful way, so, and, and as a talented team with incredible resources and you, you and your colleagues are just so responsive when we have something we have to embody.
Yeah, we feel the same way, anytime we come up with, hey, we think this is going to be an issue, or, hey, we want to do a survey, or, you know, even when we do the attendant part of the survey, it's something that we've worked very closely, uh, to create so that we know that we're all on the same page and gather the data that we all want to see.
Yeah.
So it really is, is amazing.
And when we shy away from the middle school one, you're very, very accepting of that.
Absolutely. Uh, so we need to continue to work as a community, uh, and bring in more community partners, from coaches to clergy members, parents, anybody that we can as part of the community, and really address the forty developmental assets as a community, uh, so that when young people are downtown, people are saying hi to them, uh, and just doing things that are really simple that actually make a huge difference, and we don't always think about them as making a huge difference. Uh, and then we need to continue to work with our young people to tell the story beyond just these charts and numbers, uh, and that's what we're doing next Thursday. So really just kind of putting the power back in their hands too, because it was interesting to when we started meeting with them, like, you know, we talked about you guys and what you're doing, and they're like, but nobody's talked to us. It's like, well, this is your time to share the story.
Do you share, um, this with parents, the community, do you use this in like social norming at the school, like?
All of the above. We'll use this for the next two years until we have new numbers, uh, but we, uh, we're doing the, the community rollout next week, uh, we're going to continue to work with, you know, the media, uh, we'll do a bunch of things on so, on social media, and we'll continue to work with the schools too in terms of, okay, what do we need to zero in on and, and work on, and what could we do together, and who else do we need to pull in, which is really the big question that we've been working with lately.
And we've also talked about, there really needs to be a call to action around the assets and to engage all the different groups that intersect with KID, so about, Kate, you may have been there, maybe Gail went about three, four years ago at Convocation, um, we invited every single group that was involved with KID, we invited youth clergy, all the youth sports presidents, any of the folks involved with the arts barn, and we all came together, but there's got to be a real call to action that there's a science to this, you know, that the assets are legit, they're real, you look at that one chart, it's two years, two surveys in a row where you see low assets, high usage, lot of assets, low usage, I don't know how much evidence we need to say this is the way to go. Gail had her first kickoff meeting with the wellness team, and that's PE, health, and all the counselors, that's the foundation of what they want to do, and it is a very, and, and Gail on the community, I think is the next step.
And Scott was part of that kickoff meeting.
A big part.
A big part, he was going to leave at a certain time and he ended up staying, so that was really nice because, uh, we're, we're actually continuing that work and we're trying to come up with a kind of a founding philosophy of integration, um, and a lot of this information is part of that, uh, so we have a series of visuals that we're working on and that are also going to do a lot of, um, crosswalks to the work, and that will be the foundation for everything that we do in the next two years, um, and hopefully serve Madison and Gail and family services as well.
Do you present this data to the kids that took the survey?
So we've started to work with the small group, but we're going to find ways to get the data out to the commu, into the school community in a meaningful way that they'll pay attention to.
Because, you know, they're part of the community and they can outreach to each other.
Absolutely. Uh, one of the big things, so we've been focused mostly on the next, their thing, because it's coming up really fast, but we started to have conversations about how to get this out to their peers, and one of our young people that we work with absolutely loves that asset chart, and he's like, we just need to put it everywhere, so, um, it's interesting, they'll probably go into like stall talk while they're going to the bathroom, it is right in front of them, but we're going to also find different ways to get it out through like home room news and stuff like that, too.
That's great.
And this will actually influence, hopefully, some assemblies or other programs that we can do within the school system.
Is the librarian part of the group, I'm going to ask a little bit of this question, um, it, um, the group that's getting together on Thursday, the library, the town, whether...
Um, hopefully it'll come, so it's, it's open to the whole community, so we'll do a lot of what you said.
Yeah.
Special invite.
Yeah, and then.
I'm looking at this reading for plug-ins. Yes, yes.
I'm thinking, Gail, you mentioned PE and the arts, is the librarian part of that group?
Not, not, um, it's PE, health, and guidance that we're working on in it, but I did meet with Sunny a couple weeks ago about the meeting, she's great.
Yeah.
Looking forward to doing a lot with her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm picturing Penny Killold.
Oh, my goodness.
Because already, like, the reading during hall, that whole thing, yeah, I think it's wonderful.
It is great.
Yeah, more time during class.
You should see what they're going to do next.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Scott, I want to thank you because Catherine did this before she did the community rollout, and I appreciate that, I know that this kind of stole a little bit of that thunder, but I appreciate it.
And I'm really grateful to that too, and I know that you also presented, I mentioned it a ton, I know I mentioned to you at the board selectman meeting on Monday, but I think it'd be great to do a joint meeting, I know it's not for a couple years till you do this again, but, um, because I know their questions and their perspectives can help us understand and, and vice versa, so I think a joint meeting at that point would be, I would say, powerful. Thank you so much for coming.
That's great, so good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Love it too. Yeah. Thank you for coming, Mr. Bodnar.
Any questions, Mr. Bodnar, while you got them? Yeah?
I don't think more than we ask, but thank you.
Okay, we're good, thank you, bye.
Okay.
Yeah, you do?
Yeah, I have a question.
Good.
Um, when talking about like marijuana coming into everything?
Yeah.
Like, from the time I was probably in third grade, we were always taught about the effects of smoking and the effects of drinking, but marijuana's never really a bigger issue until now it's being legalized, so is that added to the curriculum now or will it be added?
So, um, yeah, the curriculum right now, we're, we're working on, really, instead of keeping health kind of in this bucket, and then you go to PE and you keep healthy bodies in this bucket, and then you go to guidance and you talk about wellbeing, um, our, our philosophy is that we want to see a more integrated approach K through twelve, so really you're developing those assets over time and you're really, um, using, you don't travel from content to content, um, it's integrated and classroom teachers are a part of that too. So those topics that are relevant, that you just talked about, marijuana and, and all of the other trends that seem to come up, I think our health curriculum has to be nimble enough that it's going to change on the dime, right? Um, because something comes up and we've got to address it, um, in large part, we're, we're just doing that with flexibility within the curriculum, but I think as soon as the curriculum becomes like concrete, then we're not being adaptive enough to respond to whatever the current stuff is that our kids are, are facing. Um, and we're, we're really looking, Carol, I'll do a little unveiling, we're looking at doing that through kind of compartments and we're looking at doing something at the core called empowered learning for kids, um, and, and this is a draft, uh, looking at some major category shifts about self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, positive relationship building, healthy decision-making, and physical wellness, so those being very distinct areas that we're going to continually develop in K through twelve. That's a little bit different than what we've been doing, big shift, um, but hopefully we'll do it really well, and, and you'll come back and check and see how we're doing.
But how about your question, do you need something more immediate, like for...
Well, if she says you're not doing concrete curriculum, I guess it makes sense that you're talking about them all together and it's shifting a little bit, but, yeah.
But in terms of content and health, my understanding is, and I just did an audit like in the beginning of this cycle, that it is being addressed as early as middle school, that in the health classes, that they're bringing up those topics, so, um, can't say exactly which unit, so, without curriculum, right?
Okay. Um, so, um, any other, no, you have no other questions?
Nope.
Okay, so board member comments?
So I just, um, wanted to mention, I went to the board of selectmen meeting Monday morning, um, because, um, on the agenda was a discussion of the timeline for the referendum, um, which obviously directs us in our facilities renewal plan, um, I was hopeful that we would have pinned down a date, um, unfortunately, a date has been narrowed but not pinned down, um, the communications will give you a broader update, um, in a bit, but, um, essentially, um, you know, we're going to move forward, um, with our communications on, um, the facilities renewal plan, based on a fall referendum, but, um, it is not in our, we cannot set the date, so we're re, really waiting on the board of selectmen to do that, um, to have a concrete timeline, um, but in the meantime, I just want to assure everybody and Emily well in her report, um, let, um, you know, that we are going to put, put our foot on the gas and really start communicating, um, to the community more about that, but, um, and I'll, I'll be talking, um, with our first selectwoman some more about really pinning down, um, that date, so it looks like it will be in October or sixth or November third referendum, um, and I'm hopeful that we will hear a concrete date soon. Any comments?
Okay, um, so committee reports, curriculum and student development.
Okay, um, the curriculum committee met a week ago on the Tuesday, the fourth, um, it was like freaking from a fire hose of data, it was very informative, data-rich, uh, we considered a couple of questions of what are we teaching, how are our kids learning, how do we know that they're learning, and how are we approving? Um, so the topics on the agenda, first of all, we had an update on the training and materials for phonics at elementary school, and, um, we're transitioning, and Gail and Wendy will lean on you heavily for the details. Uh, so we, um, are transitioning to Fontas and Pennell, uh, and Erin, um, Chester, thank you, gave a very detailed look at the phonics training, um, and the amount of, um, data teams, the amount of analysis that goes into it, the, um, uh, learning, fresh learn communities that go into it, um, we're examining benchmarks and progress, um, happy to report that the ELA showed some improvement, grades three to four, um, next, we took a look at the next generation science standards, um, this is the first year, I believe, that they were administered, um, so we are currently analyzing the results, um, some issues that we've unearthed are, we're, it didn't exactly mesh with our curriculum development cycle, um, and we are, um, looking at these are practice tests, um, anticipation rates were low for grade eight, they were excellent otherwise, and we're going to learn how to use the software. Um, have I missed any substance here?
It's a really nice job, yeah, yeah, just, uh, a lot of, uh, professional development, professional growth, um, and a lot of, uh, good indicators that we're on the right track, so.
Next, we reviewed progress with the accountability index, uh, Jeffrey stayed the same, Ireland went up one category, Ryerson went up one category, and Holston made a one-year progress towards exit on that list, we have data for that. Um, the new report card is, is now online, um, as a result of a lot of friendly input, um, Catherine, we took a look at it, not to be on the spot, I mean, Gail, what, what's on the new elements of that?
Uh, the progress report, K through five, um, definitely, we had the benefit of a lot of parent input, we had a separate session where parents gave us some guidance on the verbiage that we were using, um, some of the highlights are, that were a lot more descriptive in the indicators, um, that we, we talked very specifically about what kids are doing and how they're progressing, um, and we've also included what we call the twenty-first century capacities, or some of those, um, skills that we're developing around critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, self-direction, um, so there is a very active part of the website and it's also got a Q and A for parents who might need a refresher on how to look at the report card and how to read it, um, so that's there as well, but, um, by and large, I think the parents have indicated that it's a, a more informative, um, report card, K through five, um, and I'm looking at this because we had a little aside, um, just informally about that, unsolicited, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, for those, we had a chat at a PTO meeting and Becky went through the new report card in depth and there was a lot of positive feedback from the parents who attended the PTO meeting about how it really was indicative of how the teachers really understood their child, most, what stood out the best, at least what we, what we were really happy about is the fact that it talks about work habits, and is your child a good citizen in the classroom, because it's great that they're, you know, improving in spelling and stuff like that, but I want to know, and that was upfront, is my child a good citizen, are their work habits improving, and the fact that you guys added that into the report card was very important, I think, across the board for parents.
I appreciate that. That was, uh, parent input, you know, where should that fall in the series of the report card, and all the parents were like right up top, right up top.
Right up top, it's very important, it was very important for us to understand that our child is, is doing well amongst their peers in interacting, not necessarily learning their ABCs.
That's great.
So, uh, you know, we, it was our first year of implementation, so, uh, we've had some growing pains in terms of how to fill it in and, you know, how many practitioners are actually, uh, inputting, so next year we're hoping to go to an online, uh, version that will make it a little bit more efficient for the educators.
Um, this is a bit out of sequence, but I forgot to mention that we reviewed the results of the EZCBM, um, the re-task per grade one, um, I think, analysis will be forthcoming on that, um, the last topic on the agenda was the, um, a change in kindergarten registration, I think it's onsite now at Jeffrey and at, uh, Ryerson, March sixteenth, seventeenth, so you get to see the cute little kids, you get excited, their school.
In the actual schools that they'll be going to.
Yeah.
But you'll miss seeing them at campus. They used to have little footprints.
Yeah, the footprints are.
That's really nice.
And they have the opportunity to have like a mini kindergarten experience, so they'll go for a little story hour and get a little book.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, a little bus ride around with a prek in the ass.
Wow.
With their parents.
That's a good deal.
Yeah, it's going to be great, it's going to be great.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, so that's more of a tour of the horizon, we'll go in a little more depth as, as we understand this, um, these issues. I'll say a little more.
Any other, any questions? Okay, communications?
Yes, communications committee met tonight, um, we had a productive meeting, we focused on the communications messaging plan for the facilities renewal plan, looking ahead to one of those referendum dates, whether it's October or November, um, Zoe joined us and we talked through our priorities in terms of getting information out, answering questions, having resources available for the community, um, working on a timeline as to what we get out when, when we will have sort of. um, working on a timeline as to what we get out when, when we will have sort of public forums and events to answer parents and community members' questions. Zo is going to be working a lot on this over the next few months. So as board members and others think of questions or concerns, um, one thing, she'll be creating a couple of really great documents for us. Um, one will be just sort of like an F A Q, so as you hear things around the community, questions that come up around the referendum or the plan to send them Zo's way. Um, she's also gonna create some documents that, you know, this is what a yes vote would mean, this is what a no vote would mean, clarifying some of the questions that people might have. Um, we talked about possible slogans, that would sort of sum up the plan. We'll be working on that. Talking about, you know, just gathered all that information, including the need for some images, more information about designs to answer parents' questions about where is this new building going to be? How will Brown be reconfigured to accommodate smaller children? So lots on the horizon, but definitely for board members to, any, anything that comes up, questions you have or that you hear, you know, at the barber shop, or Kirk seems to spend most of his time, ironically, to send Zo's way, so she can gather those, because we'll sort of get to see themes and the questions that we have. Is there a, um, social media component to that? Yes, she'll be doing that, cause she manages the, you know, the social media pages, a tab on the website.
It's blowing up right now.
Okay.
There's a huge conversation on Facebook about the possible referendum coming up and when it's gonna be, when it's gonna happen, and about, it's-
So, so- Yeah, anything, cause I think Zo monitors the, you know, Madison, the art, social media sites, but, you know, if you see things and themes coming up and, and trends and questions that we can answer and get the proper information.
Thirty-three comments long now.
So, yeah, take notes. And so that would be really helpful.
And one of the things that we did create in that, I'm sorry, excuse me, in creating that position was that if there were trends in one way or the other, then we would produce information and blast that out. And Zo presented the analytics to our reach. It's, it's grown exponentially, so we could help at least kind of blunt that. You're not gonna stop posting things, but at least get the reasonable person to see it.
That would be helpful to, you know, point in that direction. Can you send me her email? Yes. Yeah. And there's gonna be public forums too, face-to-face opportunities for parent, people to ask questions as well, right? Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yeah, we talked about, you know, having forums at each school or maybe some other locations too, so that we can get information out to parents and community members well in advance of the referendum, in particular, knowing that once the summer's in, you know, once the kids are out of school, it's harder for us to communicate. And then there is a period of time where we can't be talking much about it, so. I'll connect to Zo. Any questions? Okay, any report?
Thank you, Emily. Um, facilities?
Has not met.
Um, finance?
Um, has not met.
Personnel? Has not met. Policies?
Policies met earlier tonight. We discussed policy 1140, distribution of materials by students, and the edits presented to us have been unanimously recommended by the committee and have been brought to the board in March for a first reading, so expect that soon. Uh, we spent the majority of our time, uh, beginning discussing the shipment review of policy 5110.4, suspension, expulsion, exclusion from school slash selectivities. Pretty critical policy. So, uh, we're gonna continue discussion of 5110.4 in March at the committee level with some of the high school administration present, hopefully. Um, and I would encourage everybody to attend if you are interested in that topic, as I think we will see some, uh, important changes to that policy come forward. So if you have thoughts about it, interest, come on down to, uh, the policy committee. You also have five first readings tonight. I won't go into them or list them, they're, they're on your agenda. Uh, if you have any questions about those, please, uh, forward them my way or raise them to a policy committee member. Um, our next meeting is in March, and we will review any comments received on the first readings at that point. End of report.
Any questions?
Sorry, I forgot one thing. Can I add back to my report?
I believe you can. You're gonna be a parliamentarian.
We'll leave here, don't forget.
I just wanted to say we did also, um, discuss adding a couple of meetings for the communications committee. So we're gonna be meeting monthly for the next several months. You will be getting invitations, but we know we have a lot of work to do, so we'll be picking up the pace. Sorry. Thank you.
Emily? Um, C I P?
No, not at the last time.
We have not met. Learn liaison. Um, our selectman liaison is absent.
But after we added him to the agenda.
Um, audience response? Thank you for your comments earlier, Liz. Super helpful. Appreciate it. Um, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Oh my gosh. Um, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Need a motion to request from the boards of selectmen and finance a special appropriation of $65,000 to fund the Madison Public Schools' external placements for special education reserve fund.
So, second.
Discussion?
I, I would, you know, you wanna take credit for a great idea. I'd love to take credit for this, this fund. It predates me. It was a wonderful idea by the town. And, uh, when I came here, I couldn't believe that, that the foresight. This is a, a, a great idea when it comes to stabilizing Board of Ed budget. We have no control. We, we, we brought, forecast our budget, uh, 12 to 18 months in advance, uh, in the fiscal year. And we do have an impact when we may have a disabled learner move here and need services beyond what we can provide. So this will allow us to maintain that fund at a very healthy level, and we can tap into that if we need to throughout the year.
Yeah, actually brings it up to $350,000.
Three hundred and fifty, yeah. Which is the cost of about the two most expensive type of out places we made, which, which has happened before. And I, on behalf of the, the board, this is, I wanna thank the town for doing this.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 21st, 2020 born education meeting.
So move.
That was you? Um, I just have one change. Uh, it was on the last page, when it said 8:30 a.m., I think we adjourned. It was a short meeting, not a long one. That's, that's it. So, um, with that in mind, as amended? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the donation of automatic external defibrillator to Brown School from the Fibotech of Guilford. Motion?
So move.
Discussion? Violet loves those things. It's very generous.
I just wanna also thank Madison Basketball, who has worked in conjunction to do this. We did, we, if you know Brown, you know the office, that's where we have the A U D, the gym is pretty far away. So this was noticed, and we had, um, actually a life was saved in Old Sabre, I don't know if you know about that story, about a month ago, a referee in the gym, um, actually doing a game, uh, had collapsed, and the A U D was, the machine was there. Somebody was in the audience, did it, and the person was, it's fine. Referring games again. So, um, this was pointed out and location, so thank you to the donator and thank you to the youth basketball program.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Any old business? Future agenda items? Uh, meetings and dates of importance are attached. I need, we're not adjourned yet, right? No, I need a motion to adjourn.
No, it's out of order.
Okay, yes, okay. Thank you. I thought so. I need a motion entered into executive session to discuss the mid-year evaluation of the superintendent.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.